Good afternoon and good evening fellow Toastmasters and honourable guests. I'm pleased to be appointed to talk about the Pathways as a special session master. And thank you for asking many questions for today's session. These are the list of the questions I received. I'm afraid I can't answer all of them during the session, but I will answer all of them later for sure. While answering some of the questions I received, I will share my experiences, what I have learned with Pathways. Then let's move on to the first question. The first question is, what made you to make you to Pathways Talk Dangisidis? And what's your plan from now on? Okay, this must be about the project Dangis, named Project Talk in English. The Project Talk is a set of video presentations to explain all the projects made by Bunzo Suzuki, Katashi Hisuhara and myself. We recorded sixty-five videos, including some supplementary materials. We started the videotaping at the end of the last year and finished all recording on September twenty-third this year, after ten months of work. Now I will answer the question as to why we did it. It is this, since Pathways was introduced three years ago, I have heard so often. I don't like Pathways. It's difficult to study on the computer. I'm not interested in leader. I have enough leadership. I can't give speeches. We like as before. I like the previous educational program better. I felt very disappointed whenever I heard these words. I'm tired of hearing these complaints. Besides, it was very shocking. I had that some clubs don't do Pathways and only use the previous manuals to give their favorite speeches only. I was very shocked to hear that. I thought those people misunderstand the meaning of learning. I want them to think about why we are Toastmasters. Toastmasters' educational philosophy has not changed at all. I believe learning is not a pastime. It is sometimes tough indeed, but learning is to enrich our lives and to make our lives more fulfilling. We are on the Toastmaster journey, the Pathways journey, where we can speak about the experiences we learn through doing the assignments of the Pathways. The assignments cover all areas of our lives. By learning the project, you will see yourself in a different direction. You will discover a part of yourself that you were not aware of before. I could not allow so many people to give up such great learning opportunities. So I asked Bunzo and Katashi to work with me. We had been working together since 2018 as the Pathway Trio to promote the Pathways in the district. We had many conversations. We had, we made many attempts to make it work. At the beginning, we were not inviting the guests or we are not going to explain all the project. But finally, we invited more than one hundred guests to talk with and took sixty-five videos to help members who are going to give up the Pathways. I was involved in recording all the projects and read all the project manuals. Through this activity, I became one more convinced that Pathways gives us chances to rethink our lives and to learn how to live our life more intelligently, more amicably and more exponentially. This is my answer to why we made these videos. Project Talk. And as I said, we made the sixty-five videos. Sixty-four videos out of them was taken in Japanese, but only one was taken in English by Veronica, a member of this club. So I will show you just, it was just a part of it, but please enjoy it. This is Veronica and Bunzo-san and Katashi-san, and there is another guest, Chris.
The great benefit is actually networking because you get to contact and have other people provide contacts to you. You can see what other people are posting and LinkedIn has a really good thing where they actually will tell you, you know, people who are interested in the same subject matter as you, they're reading this person or they're following this person. So that actually gives you a wider network to be able to choose from. If you're looking for new clients or prospects, that's a really good way to go about it. And of course, LinkedIn is well-known for helping people find jobs. It also enables you to deliver people have not mastered it. But I think if you treat the camera as your friends and people, so can you please tell us a little more about that?
Okay, maybe I can send you the back number of the magazine and you can read it.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Yeah. Chris, it's your turn.
Thank you. When you were talking, it got me thinking about how I use social media as well. And I think you made a good point about, are you going to use it to for yourself professionally or personally? And as a reporter, when I was writing stories, I know that I would often post them to Twitter. I put a link on Twitter. And then after a while, I decided to put a link and a photograph as well because I think on social media, people react more to photographs and videos. And it was good. It got people, it got views. And it was a good way to get my stories out there to a broader audience. I'm always wondering though, how much feedback you get from these and how it does impact you? I was interested in yours, you're a lawyer and you have your own firm, so you're promoting yourself. And I believe you said you did it on LinkedIn.
Yeah.
Could you tell us what were some of the positive impacts that you got back from it?
Sure. Thank you for the question, Chris. Yes, I decided to use LinkedIn because I wanted to promote an online course that I had developed and it was for a very specific audience. And I, apart from my clients, I wanted to reach a broader audience across Canada. And I decided LinkedIn was the way to go. And the results actually astounded me and continue to astound me because, I mean, in terms of, you know, people who have tens of thousands of followers, hundreds of thousands of followers, millions of followers, it's nothing like that. But if I think about it, nobody would read my LinkedIn posts in the past, right? I might occasionally get a like. Well, the very first post that we posted, I got over four hundred and forty views. And that was absolutely incredible for me. I mean, you know, it was many, many times the number of people who had actually looked at my LinkedIn posts before. So that was astounding. And in terms of, so really, I wanted the exposure more than anything else. But of course, as a very good byproduct would be if people actually signed up for the course. And I did get three people signing up for the course. I had lots of inquiries though from people about what the course involved. But three people did sign up. So out of four hundred, let's say four hundred and fifty views to begin with, the signup doesn't sound like a lot, but it was more than.
I'm on Facebook, I'm online, I have a blog, I'm on LinkedIn. And if I just did purpose, I could make it work in my daily life. So for example, very simple example, we want to increase the number of the club in your club, so we send out a call online or on Facebook to our club members, asking them to do a research recruiting drive. Then we cooperate and do PR activities using our respective networks. This is a very simple example, isn't it?
It's a wonderful example. And I mean, it's an example that all of us can relate to because we're all, I think that membership recruitment and retention are probably the biggest challenges for clubs. And that's an excellent way.
It's always in your daily life, right?
Absolutely, yes.
Thank you very much, everyone who participated. We hope that members who watch this video. Okay, thank you for listening. Okay. And thank you for listening. It is a very good talking. And I hope you will look at the whole thing later. Thank you very much. Then back to the next question. Oh, it has another question in this question. What's your so I can't see it, a plan from now on? Okay. Our next activity is to realize a slogan. Project Talk before starting a project. Project Talk before evaluation. Our next goal is to have our members use these videos on a daily basis along with this slogan. That's my answer to the first question. Is it okay? Now, thank you for asking. Then let's move on to the next question. Pathways Mentor Program. I would like to hear about the Pathways Mentor Program. We received many questions in the past regarding the mentor program. And I also received some about it for this session too. So it is my pleasure to talk about it. The mentor program is a series of consecutive level two, three, four and five. As you know, the level two has introduction to Toastmaster mentoring. This is a required project that so most of you have already done it. And the Pathways, not introduction, the Pathways Mentor Program, on the other hand, is a supplemental program which has level three, four and five in it. Upon completion of level two, I mean, when you finish the level two, you will automatically receive the Pathway Mentor Program in the box of suggested learning here. Okay, here. So now you do not see anything because I done it, I finished it. When you receive the, when you finish the level two, you will receive the program here. So please click it, then it will go up to the Pass and Learning Education Transcript. And please open it. Okay, then you see like this, Pathways Mentor Program here. Okay, this is just exactly the same as another pass, same design. Presentation Mastery Passes Mentor Program. And please open it. Then it has four parts. The first one, it also master Pathways Mentor Program, Prepare to Mentor Program. Prepare to Mentor. These two things, there will be no presentation or collaboration with others. Just read and learn by yourself. And Prepare to Mentor is level three. And Mentoring is level four. And Advanced Mentoring is level five. So okay, this is Prepare to Mentor is level three and level four. So actually, you will serve as a mentor for level four mentoring and level five advanced mentoring only. Advanced mentoring only. So the mentoring level four, here you will support a member, one member, to finish one project. If it is a short, short project support, it could be one or two week support. But it could be longer depending on the project you are supporting. You can support not only new members, but also experienced members. If your protege is going to do a project you have experienced, you can advise on how to do it. And even when this is a project you have no experience with, you will learn together with your protege. And the final project is Advanced Mentoring, level five. This is level five. Here, your assignment is to fulfill the role of member of fellow Toastmasters of other person for a period of six months. This is at least period of six months. And communicate regularly with your protege. Record meeting dates and times and give and receive feedback both verbally and in writing. And finally, present a five to minute speech to your club about what you learn as a mentor. This is the level five. Okay. And here's the Pathway Talk on the Mentor Program. Toastmaster Natsuko Mori explained this project, program. My explanation is very easily understandable and clear. So and besides, the two guests asked very detailed questions that will surely help the audience. So please take a look at it. It was very good talking. And next question. Regarding this question, I'm not sure of the situation, but I have some uncompleted paths which I know I have completed, but they don't seem to update. I'm not sure of the reasons for this. I don't know if it is a technical problem or if there is something I'm doing wrong or perhaps it's due to the changes. Okay, I'm not sure, but I just guess that it may be a problem related to path completion. I received some questions about the past completion in the past. I will talk about it here. Some of you may not know about it. Please listen to me for your knowledge. As you know well, of course, you know, every path is made of five levels from one, from one to five. And you do not have to study them in order. You can open and read any project you like in order. But there is one exception, exception. It is path completion, path completion. Okay? And it has one project in it, Reflect on Your Path. If you finish Reflect on Your Path and a basic manager approve it, then you will complete the path one hundred percent. That is path completion. It is not level completion. They were definitely different and other things. So Reflect on Your Path is you share the experiences by learning a path. In this case, in this case, motivational strategy. Then this path will completely finished, that path completion. Okay? And if you cannot update your curriculum, you might not have finished this project, I guess it. And this is a Project Talk explained by Mantok-san, Toastmaster Mantok. Her PowerPoint technique is very excellent and provided a very clean, clean presentation. Accurate project description will help many members to clarify their questions about the project. Please pick it up in the list of the Project Talk and watch it. Here, apart from the questions, I will talk a little, I will talk about the little handling technique at Basecamp related to path completion. Okay? Please check Path and Learning. Please open it and let's see together. Then you see here, engaging humor or passive influences, these are paths. As you know, this is, these are placed in the active section. Do you notice? But when you finish the path, the path will go to the completed section. There is another archived section. So if you can't find the path in the active section, they might be in the archived section or a completed section. Please check it. This is just for your information. Okay. Thank you for your patience. Let me back to another question. Well, this question is, if you have any recommended project, I'd love to know the titles of them along with the reasons why you recommend them. Okay? Difficult question. Okay. I'd like to share two projects that opened my eyes widest and changed me a lot. Okay? One of them is Understanding Your Communication Style. This is level two, so most of you have done it. It is a level two project compulsory. In this project, first you will answer twelve questions in the assessment to find out your communication style. So the computer will tell you whether your style is direct, initiating, supportive or analytical. I completed the assessment thinking I would be supportive. But the answer was analytical. I thought that was not true, that was wrong. So I did the assessment again. This time I was not honest. I chose some answers that did not describe me. But still, answer was analytical. I had to admit it. The manual says analytical communicators like facts and figures. Present information them in an organized manner and be prepared to answer question. And the advice to analytical communicator is be patient while they think through and process new information. Before learning this project, here's what happened. I have lived in this house more than two years. I like it very much. But it is not my own for rent. I want to buy this house. Luckily, I happened to meet the house owner. So I asked him if he was willing to sell it. Then his answer was yes. I was so excited. I did a lot of research on this property and spent two or three weeks to prepare to discuss with him. Then I met him again. We talked for about one hour. For five minutes out of one hour, I talked. He was just smiling and nodding as he listened. I completely convinced that the house was mine. I waited for his answer. I waited and waited. And a week later, he gave me a phone call. I was thrilled to answer the phone. Then he said calmly and slowly, "I can't accept your proposal." Oh my gosh. At that moment, the house was gone from me. I know I did it again. The assessment was correct. It said analytical communicator likes facts and figures. Present information in an organized manner and will prepare to answer. Yes, I prepared a lot. I talked in an organized manner. The assessment said, "Be patient while they think through and process new information." I was not patient. I talked too much. I did it again. I know I did it again. I was analytical and still I am analytical. I highly recommend you to learn this project to communicate others friendly, not analytically. Another project that could have changed my life if I had known it earlier is Understanding Emotional Intelligence, today's Tamura-san provided the speech. This project is a compulsory in level three and the motivational strategy. The assignment we should do for this project for a minimum of two weeks, keep journal for your emotion and how they impact you and others. The purpose of keeping the journal is to identify your emotional movement patterns. The project says emotional intelligence is the ability to understand and manage your feelings and to self-motivate. Manage is important. And it also says the ability to discern. Emotional intelligence is the ability to discern how others feel and respond to their emotion, emotion appropriatory. Appropriately is very important. If you have, if I had enough emotional intelligence, I could have bought that house. I need emotional intelligence, even if the dream of buying the house is gone. So to strengthen our emotional intelligence, we need to reframe negative thought. Reframing is a way of altering the way you look at something to change your perception of the experience. Yes, it's true. So I practiced. When you faced an environment or a situation that triggers a negative response, use the following techniques: relax, detach, center and focus. Let's practice together. Breathe and release. Breathe deeply. Please open your breath and breathe. Release the tension in your body. It is it. Detach, how to do that? Separate your feelings from the situation as much as possible. So I practiced to do this. I practiced by eye view. I tried to lift up my mind into the sky and look at me. My body is still on the earth and my mind is in the sky. It's like this. How do you feel this? Is it correct? I don't know, but I do that. And center. And center, I haven't mastered it yet. Drop your awareness to the center of your body. And feel yourself breathe. Breathing is very important anyway. So, but I don't know the center of my body where, here? And where is the awareness? I don't know how to do that. And the final one is focus. Choose a key, well, a keyword that represent how you want to feel or who you want to be in that moment and repeat it. Can you do that? Please do this to reframe negative thoughts. Okay? I repeat, I'm a bird, I'm a bird. And when I take a break from work, I still regret that the house was gone. And I regret why I should have listened to the house owner than I talk too much. But every time I, I think so, I try to reframe negative thought. So these are two projects I'd like to highly recommend you. And here's some information for you. There are some projects which are very similar, for example, Focus on the Positive. This is Password Talk explained by Bunzo-san. And this project is also ask, ask us to keep two week daily. And it sounds a little bit chore for the members who are going to take this project. So please look at the guests. At the beginning, they look very serious. But after talking with Bunzo-san and they talked to each other, they changed a lot. They turned very positive. And at last, they laughed a lot and smiled a lot. And finally, they were talking to what kind of speech they were going to provide to the club. What a change. This is the moment when Project Talk has done its job. Well, as the conclusion of today's special session, I can say after three years' experiences of Pathways, that Pathways, the program to learn yourself and your life, which is very definitely different from studying for a two-student. Enjoy your intelligent, amicable, and exuberant life with Pathways. Thank you for listening for a long time. I hope this session will help you.